I'd like to call to order the work session on the 16th. Everyone is here this evening, whoop, except Councilmember Hampton. Is he, does anybody heard from him? Oh, all right, okay. Then let's go on then with the agendas for discussion. We have two items tonight. I'd like to remind Council, staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any question. The first item is City Council will provide, first item is City Council will provide direction to move forward with the permanent ad hoc committees, with permanent or ad hoc committees. Our city clerk, Darcy McCracken, Lehman Laco, our human resources director will be presenting, and we welcome, will be joined by municipal court judge Mara Galendo. Hello, welcome.
Hello, thank you.
All right, we've got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight seeking your guidance and how you would like to proceed with a couple of the ad hoc committees that we've used over the last 18 months or so. It's the Council Compensation Committee and the Judicial Advisory Committee.
A lot of echo again, isn't it?
It is echoing.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Just for later, just for later use, because we just want to like echo.
So the purpose of the Council, we're going to start first with the Council Compensation Committee, and the purpose of the Council Compensation Committee would be to conduct, conduct an analysis of every other year of the total compensation for council, and that would include the benefits that council would receive. So what staff is recommending, and up to your guidance, we'd like to actually reappoint the actual Compensation Committee that did the last review, so that we can have some kind of experience on the committee. And we would actually like to have it so that they would have staggered terms, so the first, there would be a couple with two-year terms, and then the others would have four, and then once they got into their regular cycle, it'd be a four-year term, and then they'd have a two-term limit. And the first time that they would actually meet would be the spring of 2021, if this is, is what council would like us to proceed with. So with that, we'd like your feedback and your guidance.
All right, Council, who'd like to be first? Councilwoman Lortano?
This is, since obviously it doesn't affect me anymore, but I think this is a really good idea, and why I say that is because I think it's going to make sure that we have what it needs to bring other people to want to apply to run, and make sure that we compensate people fairly, because there is time lost, and it's, there is a time commitment and everything, and it's harder to get the younger people. For years, I was the youngest person, now we've got Brandon, but, you know, to attract people who have careers and represent more of the age of our city. Don't take that the wrong way, anybody, but, you know, I think it's good to have, I think you know what I'm saying, so we can get, you know, it's, it's, it's great to have that diversity, so I think that's great.
Laura?
I'm curious if the recommendations from the, the last committee have been implemented. I know we set a timeline, it was the next election, but that wasn't clear to me now what that was. Did, did, did the compensation increases occur for everyone?
No. It only impacted the people that were just newly elected, so that would have been...
So just some council members and not others?
Correct.
And not the mayor?
Correct.
Yes, that's what my...
That, that, so I, when we did it, I thought the next election was for everybody, but I didn't realize it was going to be staggered, and it just, it's like, well, if we're, by the time we have the next Compensation Committee, you're already behind, because the, the other council members and the mayor haven't even gotten an increase yet.
Next? Molly?
Well, I'd like to see the committee continue, if nothing else, just to let the public know that they are taking a look on our behalf, because it seems every budget year, we're talking about salaries and being in the marketplace, and we take such great care of all of our employees, and we don't do anything with us sitting here. Not that it makes that much difference, but I think that in all fairness, we need it, we need it to know if we're in the right place, or if we need to do more or less, and without that, and that's the citizen overview of it, and I think that's really important. And I agree with Laura. I just couldn't believe that we would do something and then just say, but you gotta wait for four years. I mean, but that's, you know, that, I don't think we can talk about that, because it's not on the agenda. Can we, Mr. Attorney?
Sorry, I got a question over here, too. Can you restate your question? I'm sorry.
Oh.
I have a follow-up question for Laura.
Well, maybe I should have talked quicker.
I mean, yes.
Spit it out. Okay. So I just said, I agree with Laura, saying that if we are going to raise anyone's compensation, it should have been equally and above board for everyone. I, but I said, we probably can't talk about that, since it's not on the agenda. Or can we?
Compensation for everyone on the council, or...
Yes, on the council. That's all we're talking about, because this is, that's what it's for.
I think you can probably go a little bit into compensation. This is the Compensation Committee, if it's going to be what their purview is going to be. I don't think you can have a discussion about what council compensation should be.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
But the process, I think you can talk about.
Okay, I agree with Laura.
Who's next?
I just have a question on that.
Yes, was it, I, I was under the assumption that was a charter issue?
As far as when the effective date of a change in council salary is a charter issue.
So that's why we couldn't, so that, when we have the Charter Committee, if that's something we wanted to do with this committee, we could change that with the charter.
You can't. If you look at some other cities, ours basically says that any salary change is effective when a new council member takes office, and that extends to existing council members when they're reelected. But if you look at some other cities out there, there, there are different provisions on how to handle that, and a lot of them do use like a committee structure. If they recommend it, and it's gone through the committee process, it's effective upon adoption. So there are different ways to adopt council salaries, and you could have a council committee, or a charter committee look at that.
Okay, so that would be a double committee then to look at that one?
A double committee, yes.
The committee would have to look at the committee. Okay, I get it.
So we didn't have any in there for the state making a change of dates and extension? So we had a number come into that?
That is correct.
Joe?
No, I like changing it every couple of years. I, I agree with your recommendation. When you wait as long as we had done before, what was it, 10 years, 12 years, I forget what it is.
Yeah.
It gets kind of tough for any adjustments at that point. And just to follow up what Councilmember Lortano had mentioned, if we're going to look at anything as far as charter changes, I, I think from a fairness standpoint, that's something we may want to look at, whatever it takes effect, it takes effect for all, so that you don't have dual salaries for members on council, you know. It is, it's either for all or for not, is my, and, and that's something we could probably handle through a charter change, so.
Joe?
I, I guess I'm struggling with the, the rotation period. If we're doing it every two years, but it can't take effect until the election, we, we're making a policy and having a group that is really going to be saying, okay, we should, we recommend a change in salary, okay, we recommend a change in salary, and then it'll take effect. So I, I think we need to look at that before we decide to how we're going to do the compensation piece, and if it ends up being a charter change, then it's a charter change if...
There was also the provision that any kind of change for salary had to take place 180 days prior to the election. So that's why we were thinking the spring of the odd year will give us plenty of time just to get it into effect without impacting that.
Okay, so you push that through, and, all right.
What does that mean?
Well, I don't know, but I have to tell you, this was a bug for me, and it still is, and I'm very verbal about it. I thought the mayor's position should get along with everybody else, and so it was my luck that the mayor quit, right? So we had that, so we had the two-year term, and it was my luck that, I guess, it, it says to me, mayor hasn't done enough. She didn't get a raise with rest of the council, because she didn't fulfill her job. And that's how I feel, so I'm going to be very verbal. And I wanted it there for the new mayor coming on. I wanted for that person to know, you better be ready to work your socks off, because this is a busy job, and you're required to do a lot of things that you don't see in print. And I think the next person coming in is going to have to sacrifice time from their family and from their job to get the job done. So I, I really was looking for the future, thinking this is really going to be great. And, and also, I, I thought, I'm just be honest with you, I thought that I deserved it like with everybody else, that we were as a team, we're all doing the same things, working hard together, so. Okay? Yes?
So if we want to do that, which do we do first? Now, I'm asking the chicken or the egg? Do we need the, the, because that has to go then through election, and I think that's something we're talking about at our retreat, to, about a charter committee, does that, do we do that first? Do we move that? How does this work? Because it sounds like that's whatever he wants to do, is lump it together and not have this weird staggered system. I mean, how do we, how do we get where, to the endpoint?
I could, you want to jump in? I could jump in. I would, I would think that they could run concurrently. So the establishment of the Council Compensation Committee would be the structure which would serve long-term the goals of council regardless of the, the cycles. If we're to pursue a charter committee, and this is one of the items that we were to refer to the voters, then I, I think that would run concurrently. Just my thought.
I agree.
So I have a question.
Yes, Molly?
So do I understand correctly that the way it's written now, Laura is the only one that got a raise, and Brandon got a raise, the twoest, newest people?
Uh-uh.
Oh, Bill?
You three.
It's the three that were reelected.
So the four of us who have served the longest didn't get a raise?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Now, you're saying that in order to make it where everyone gets the raise prior to us doing it in 2021, which it was what, passed last year in 18 or 17? Whenever it was passed?
Right.
Okay. It takes a charter change, and to do a charter change, we have to go before the voters?
Correct.
Well, we better start now, or we're not going to get it done. That's, that's ridiculous. We need to, we need to do something so that the compensation doesn't have to go through the Charter Committee every time.
Madam Councilmember Campbell, it, it, it doesn't necessarily have to go through a Charter Committee. The current charter has a provision that says, as a sitting councilperson, you can't give yourself a raise.
Oh, it does.
It becomes effective when a council member is either elected or reelected to office. So that's your timing issue.
Okay. Well, other cities do it.
There are cities that I've seen charters that...
Well, I don't know about charter, I'm just taking Galindo, for example.
Yeah, for adjusting council. There's different ways to adjust council compensation.
Okay.
And there are ways, I've seen, that sitting councilmembers can get a raise, and some of them use a committee structure to validate the raise, so...
Even as a charter city?
I've seen, I've seen a charter. I have not studied the issue in depth, but I have seen charters that do allow council raises.
Well, how can we find out about that and talk about it?
Well, we can do some research for you and report back.
I thought you know.
Well, you know, I think that, I think the subject is controversial. Now, you know, people are going to listen to this, what I'm saying tonight, they're going to say, oh, you know, and wants to vote herself in as a raise, and I think that's, that's the side of it, it becomes very difficult.
Yeah.
That if somebody doesn't like the work you're doing, or doesn't care for you, and thinks somebody else, then they're going to, that's the first thing they're going to use when you go out into political life, and you're going to run for office, they're going to say, oh, they voted themselves their own raise. So that's a dilemma, I think, that we're in, and you have to make that decision, how strong you feel, if you really fear that. I'm giving you an example, I can remember when, I don't know if I can talk about this, Surprise built their city hall.
Mm-hmm.
The team that did that, all got voted out next year.
Mm-hmm.
About three or four, eyes, I remember it, I don't remember if it was working there at that time. So it is, you know, it is very political, so when you make that decision, you just have to take a deep breath and know.
Yeah.
That you have to convince your voter that the job you've done, but I think you can drive through this city and see what the staff has accomplished along with the policy that the, that the council passed, and that's your proof out there for any of you that are going to run again, so.
Yeah, well, I just wanted it to be a level playing field. I think that's the fair thing to do. I'm, if I would have realized what we voted on, I would not have voted for it, I'll be honest, I would not. That is not fair. I don't care how you take it, it is not fair, and people that know us and see us and see what we do, they know what we do. And they're saying, we can't believe you actually do what you do, because it is what it is. And it may be political, but I don't think in our city it would be political, not now. And it's just, I just want it to be fair. And now that I know it is not fair, I'm really unhappy that it's not fair, but I didn't pay attention, so sorry.
Sherry?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a, sounds like it's an easy fix, because we're going to go to the Charter Committee, we're going to look for that. We can do some sort of charter amendment that says, along the lines, maybe leave it to the Compensation Committee, and the, the Charter can then basically refer to the compen, then we can make sure it goes through correctly.
But it could come out, too. It could come out of the charter.
Well, that's what I mean, just take it, just say it's, this is, it's not a charter issue.
It shouldn't be.
And, and then, then we can just have our committee, and then that way it'll be fair. And then fair, not just for this council, but fair...
For the future.
Coming in, yeah.
For the future. You know, so I, I agree with you, I think we just have to kind of...
I mean, so, because I don't understand, so if they're getting more money now, so do the new people come in equal to them now?
Yes, so next, next time, whoever wins would come in, and whatever, we came in, right? Yeah.
Twenty-two.
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 I'm going to be in a barrel by then.
Don't say that.
Okay.
Molly?
Twenty-two.
I'm going to be with you.
Wow, I didn't know it was that long, holy cow.
Yeah, the next election. We're going to make it a pretty barrel, though, don't worry.
Oh, gosh. Okay, well, that's it. I mean, I just, I just would like a level playing field. I think that's the fair thing to do, and, and everyone has their own opinion, but, you know, I don't think we're asking anything out of line, I really don't.
All right, are we on to the next? Yes.
On to the next. So, Mayor and Council, during the recruitment process for Judge Galindo, you had expressed an interest in...
You're going to have to speak louder.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay. During the recruitment process for Judge Galindo, you, Council had expressed an interest in the possibility of a Judicial Advisory Committee, so we wanted to bring that back to the Council with the recommendation.
Good evening, everyone. We are, and I'm completely on board with the recommendation for Judicial Advisory Committee. There hasn't been one for the city of Goodyear, and the purpose of this committee is to act as an advisory committee to council for judge appointments, judge reappointments, development of performance review criteria, conducting performance review surveys, providing performance review feedback. The recommended committee structure, at its inception, would be for reappointment purposes, would be, the ongoing makeup would be two presiding judges, two members of the Arizona State Bar, three citizen members, and of course, the Goodyear Presiding Judge, but the Presiding Judge is a non-voting member, seated for all matters, except of course, reappointment evaluation of the Presiding Judge. The initial term would be one to three-year terms staggered, and ongoing two-year terms with a two-term maximum. The recommendation would be the prior committee that was brought together for my recruitment and selection, we could begin with them, if that's something that would, that, that Mayor and Council would be inclined to do. But we, we fully support this advisory committing going forward.
Thank you. Comments? Sherry?
I, I think it's an excellent idea. You know, I've been thinking this is a good idea, because we had the same judge for so long, and then when we had you, we didn't have the same process set in. The only change I would think might be a good idea, because I remember last time it was hard to get presiding judges, maybe we could say presiding judge or superior court judge?
Yes.
And, or justice court, I mean, I did just have that position, maybe a little bit more, just in case we couldn't find one, because we did have trouble finding people that were in trial or busy or something. I, I love, I love the idea, I think it's a great idea, so thank you.
Joe?
I would defer to the attorney, I, I like what you were saying there, Councilmember Lortano, so I would defer to her with those little tweaks.
Molly?
Can you remind us who was on the committee, just to refresh our, our memory? Because I don't remember.
We had, we had Presiding Judge Eric Jeffries from Phoenix Municipal Court, and he has since retired, Judge, Presiding Judge Maria Brewer from Buckeye, we had Citizens Alex Desch, is it Deschun?
Deschuk.
Deschuk, excuse me, Mario Colombia, and, and then we'd had to add two members from the Arizona Bar Association, of course, me as a non-voting member.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
I'm very supportive of the idea, I think it's great, I love to have a little structure surrounding this process, and I'm fully supportive of the idea.
Bill?
It's a great idea, we always struggled with Judge Simson's annual or biannual review process, and we just get one for the city attorney, and we know what he does, then we'll, we've got it nailed down for the manager, we just have to get a new tool or something for the, for the city attorney, but this, this is a great idea. And we just get one for the city attorney, and we know what he does, then we'll. We've got it nailed down for the manager. We just have to get a new tool or something for the, for the city attorney, but this, this is a great idea.
I agree with the group. It was very, very difficult. First of all, we only had one person on this council that really knew anything, and that was Sherry. And we, poor Sherry was put on the spot so many of the times, because we just didn't have the information. And when we found out we were going to have to do that, it was really overwhelming. Not that we didn't pursue it, and we did the best job we could. We talked to people, and we viewed videos, and we did everything we thought was right. But we really, I think, left, lost a lot. We were very fortunate, Judge, to get you.
No, thank you.
And thank you for choosing us and being here with us and carrying on in the court. But for the next time that might happen, we really need some real structure to it, and we need a help from the experts.
And it pro, it promotes transparency, accountability, and even the public's interaction and, and involvement as well. So it, it's good all around.
Right. It's a combination.
Yes.
Right. Anything else you want to?
Nope. So we'll be back at a future regular meeting in order for you guys to actually approve an ordinance than setting up the committees.
Well, let me thank, we appreciate you bringing this forth, and, and, and thank you for allowing the mayor to be so blunt. I'm sure I'm seeing, going to see it in the papers, you know, and how that goes.
My barrel will be in the paper.
It goes from one, one meeting to the next meeting. But I think it's really important for the next person coming in that will understand. And I didn't do the job for the money, but once you get in the job, you do realize the circumstances surrounding you is a little bit different than you envisioned, so. All right, thank you very much. Let's go on to the next one. This is going to be a discussion and a half. You all got your skateboards? Hmm? Oh, there it is. I'm looking for it. It's so nice. So that next item is to discuss some prior direction on the proposed e-scooter and e-bicycle rental regulation. Christian Williams, Executive Management Assistant, present. Oh, look at this. Oh, someone take a picture. Oh, my, and your shirt matches your helmet. Only you would have that.
I hope it just, I hope this isn't a recommendation.
I need one of those for GCU, is what I need, to get between classes.
That needs to go on the, on the, in the newspaper. That is wonderful. And you didn't fall. I mean, you did really a good, in that little space you came through. I'm impressed.
Practice that.
Very good.
Mayor, before Christian starts, can I just please ask the police chief, when we talk about the electric motorcycles, to please not drive them through the court building? All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, we're going to talk about electric scooters, e-bikes, and rentable scooters. And I brought in my personal electric scooter, so you all could see it. So if any of you would, uh, so you can have a in-person visual example. If any of you would like to take a ride after the meeting, please let me know. I'd be happy to accommodate that. I have two, actually, so. All right. And tonight, we're going to discuss what e-scooters and e-bikes are, where you might see them. I'm also going to discuss how they work from a rental perspective. We'll then discuss the history of these devices in the context of our Goodyear ordinance. I will then provide you with an update on how the state law has impacted these devices. A new law's been in effect now for about three weeks. We will then discuss how other municipalities are adopt, adapting to this emerging form of transportation. I'll present you some staff recommendations, and we'll discuss some points that you might want to consider. And then I'll be taking notes as we have that discussion, so that we can move forward with your prescribed policy direction. So let's move forward into the presentation. So, as you're probably all aware, there's a new and growing trend in transportation: bicycles and electric kick scooters, which I will refer to in this presentation as devices. They're becoming available for rent in cities across the world. Companies like Uber, Lyft, Bird, Lime, Skip, Razer are leaving devices throughout cities to allow them to be picked up and used for riders on demand. On the slide, you'll see examples of rentable bikes, electric scooters and electric bikes. In the picture, you'll see examples of rentable self-propelled and also electric-propelled devices. All the, all of the devices operate under a very similar concept. On the left, you will see rentable bikes in docking stations. I took this picture in Phoenix. The bikes can be rented out, and when the rider is done with their, their transportation, they can pay a reduced fee if they bring them back to the docking station. So that's what you'll see there on the left in Phoenix. In the center of the slide, you'll see dockless electric scooters that I saw staged in Scottsdale. On the right, you'll see a hybrid electric scooter with a seat. I'll call those e-bikes for simplicity, and I took that over in Tempe in the Mill area. These devices, devices add to the transportation, uh, diversity of transportation options. They can get people from public transit to a final destination, solving that last-mile problem. They can reduce a car ride or, or a ride-share trip, and they can help reduce smog or vehicle emissions. Additionally, in a suburban setting, where bus or transit service is limited, they allow for greater mobility without the use of an automobile. Some people view these as fun alternatives to exploring a city. And the electric kick scooters and e-bikes most commonly have a range between five and 20 miles, depending on the speed and terrain, and they generally travel about 15 miles per hour at top speed. So, how do they work? From a rental device perspective, you'll utilize a smartphone, and individuals can find these devices via GPS on a map. When you open the app, you see the available scooters in your area, and if you need help locating them, there's a cool button you press, and it'll make the device chirp, so you can kind of find out where it is. Once you get your scooter, you take a picture, you scan the quick response code, it's like a little scan bar, and that'll allow you to ride the device. And the scooter can be unlocked for about $1, and people can ride them from, from between about $5 and .30 per minute. Once the user's completed their ride, they can pause the device or lock the device. It's basically checking it back in, and they, they leave it, they take a picture with their phone, and somebody else can come up and use them. If the device is moved without being unlocked, it will often make a chirping sound to tour that act. And the commercial-grade rental ones are pretty heavy, so if someone tries to steal it, it gets kind of burdensome, so it's kind of hard to move those when they're not unlocked. And also, for example, on the Bird app, when a user finishes their ride, they take a picture of it, so that Bird can see how you parked it. And also, if you're a user looking for it, you can see a picture of where it's parked. So, in a nutshell, that's how they work. So you might wonder what happens to these devices at night or when they run out of battery. I took the three pictures on the left when I saw the process unfolding. So at night, or when it's out of battery, they're picked up by a neighbor who works for Bird or Lime or a scooter company. So similar to the concept of Uber, where your neighbors are working for the company and they might share their car, with, uh, scooters have a similar concept. So they're called chargers when they work for Bird, and they're called juicers when they work for Lime. Get it, like, juicing a lime? That joke was a lot funnier when I wrote it down. But they'll come and pick these devices up, and they'll take them home and charge them. So when I was in San Diego, I noticed a convertible pull-up, and this guy got out, and he put a bunch of scooters in his car. And this was during the day, so I imagine they'd either run out of battery or needed to restage them somewhere else. And when I was in LA, I noticed a guy lined up a bunch of those e-bikes, and had a van, and he shoved them all in the van. So that's that picture in the third, right, the third picture from the left there. And when they've received a good night's charge, the juicers or chargers take them and stage them, meaning, meaning they bring them back out to the community, and they're ready for commuting in the morning. So a person can take these devices to their house and charge them, and the picture on the right shows an example of what that might look like. So now that you know a little bit more about what happens to them at night and what they are, let's talk about our Goodyear City Code. So, if you remember back in the mid-'90s or '2000s, when there was a different type of scooter that was very popular, it was a, it was a gas version of scooter, and it was just hitting the streets. And they were a lot heavier than today's counterparts, a little bit less environmentally friendly, and they had a very loud gas motor. So if someone was riding it around in your neighborhood, it'd make quite a loud noise. I remember these from my ch- Yeah, they're pretty loud. So if somebody's riding around in your neighborhood and making a loud noise, and the council at the time crafted an ordinance very similar to the one that you might have read about recently in Glendale. It effectively created a definition for these devices and called them motorized skateboards. That's, I got you some non-motorized skateboards for a souvenir. But they did this in lieu of the state defining them in state law. So this is a point I'm going to discuss in an upcoming slide. The state did not have a definition for these devices, so they created, so that, so we created our own, so long as there wasn't one in state law. The ordinance put in restrictions on where the devices could be ridden. For example, they cannot be ridden on sidewalks. They were not allowed on streets, um, um, that are outside of local neighborhoods, essentially. They could not be ridden in park, parking lots, or places skateboards were banned. And because they were noisy, they couldn't be ridden during non-daylight hours. However, they could be ridden in bike lanes. But remember, back in Goodyear in 2005, there were fewer bike lanes on arterial roads connecting our neighborhoods, so you're effectively, um, they were ridden in your neighborhoods. So now that we know a little bit about the Goodyear ordinance, let's discuss what changed this year. So during the most recently completed state legislative session, device legislation was introduced and signed into law by the governor. A new law pertaining to these devices went into effect three weeks ago on August 27th. The state created standard definitions for electric stand-up scooters and miniature scooters within state law. An electric stand-up scooter is what you see here in council chambers today, and it's also on the picture on the left-hand side. And you might also see those as the, um, being rented out in the Valley Cities. So that's what a, an electric scooter is. A miniature scooter is something a lot smaller. You might see a child riding that to and from school. They don't go more than, say, 10 miles per hour, and you might see, yeah, you might see them being ridden to school or such. In addition to scooters, the state came up with a formal definition for motorized skateboards. The two pictures in the middle show an example of what a motorized skateboard is. I see that a lot in the downtown area around Roosevelt Row and also around ASU, they're pretty popular. They look like normal skateboards, except they have a power pack underneath them, and the rider carries around this, like, joystick-like controller, and that, that controls the speed of the board, so it's just an electric skateboard. And you also might hear the term boost boards or boosted boards, that's what those are called as well. And as it relates to control, the state law also says that cities are to treat scooters and e-bikes like bikes. So by default, they are allowed to ride anywhere someone would ride a bike. The state law also says cities can control how they are ridden, and specifically calls out bike and multi-use paths and environmental benefits. But when it comes to staging, the state law does not address the concept of staging devices in the right-of-way, meaning it did not say how cities should regulate companies dropping off these devices on sidewalks and other areas. So now let's talk about how other Valley Cities and towns are managing this new technology. So in your packet and available on the web for the public, there's a very busy chart with how Valley Cities are handling regulations and policies. And Tammy, our communications person, said that chart is terrible and ugly. So I just put it in the chart, but I'm going to try to explain these concepts with pictures, because I think that'll be a lot more fun and a little bit easier. So an annual fee means the municipality does something special or different for devices, and charges a yearly fee to operate in the city. In the case of Phoenix, there'll also be like a $500 one-time application fee, and some cities like Scottsdale don't charge a fee at all, where cities like Tempe charge nearly $8,000 for an annual license fee. Staging is when a vendor comes out and places devices in the right-of-way. Cities have ranges between four and five per vendor, per location, or up to 10 max, regardless of the vendor. So keep in mind, in the case of a vendor max, multiple vendors can place in one area, which can lead to this multiplication effect. So if we use that picture as an example, what, if Scottsdale has a five max, it might mean you could have 10 scooters in one area, because each vendor's entitled to, to five. So that's kind of what that means. And cities like Tempe have 10 max. Spacing means how far apart these groupings of devices must be from one another. So if the max is four, you can't have another grouping of four for a certain number of feet. Some cities have designated areas, and some have minimum spacings between them, such as between 150 feet, 200 feet. So in this picture, you can see an example of spacing between the scooters. Moving means how long devices are allowed to remain in one place if they are not ridden. Some cities have hours of operations, so for example, vendors might need to disable devices at 10:00 PM and bring them back out at 5:00 AM. In that case, I would call that a 24-hour move cycle, and you'll see ranges in cities between 24 and 72 hours for how long they can stay in one place, if they're not ridden. If a complaint is issued, um, if a complaint is issued to a company about where devices are parked, or a user improperly parks a device or it's fallen over, um, or blocks ADA, the company has so many hours to remedy the situation. Most communities have a remedy range between two and four hours. Location or limit means there might be a geographic boundary where devices are to be staged, ridden, or balancing of the fleet. For example, Tempe requires 20% of a vendor's deployed devices be located in the south Tempe, so basically you can't throw all your scooters around ASU and Mill Avenue. You have to have some equity in the distribution from a transportation standpoint. Impound fee means a city will charge if they have to impound the vehicle, and these fees vary greatly or are not regulated at all. And last but not least, surcharges means the city receives a share of the profits. So either for every ride or every day the device is on the streets, the city receives a portion of a user rental payment. Some cities charge a flat fee per scooter per day, and some municipalities want a few cents per ride. And these are often negotiated in contracts with the vendor. So cities are handling this emerging tech, uh, trend in a variety of ways. Scottsdale, Mesa, and Tempe were some of the first cities that experienced these devices in their communities. Scottsdale's ordinance is very attractive in its simplicity, minimal staff time, promotes rider responsibility, complaints go directly to the vendor, private property owners have a choice, the goal is to keep the sidewalks ADA compliant and keeping the community looking nice. Tempe had a different approach, and they decided to create a formal program and charge a fee for companies operating in the city. Mesa has no regulations at all, and as of today, Phoenix just started their scooter program. But all the cities strive for some common goals that I've, I've recognized. It's addressing the aesthetics, company responsibility, user responsibility, safe behavior, and these cities have set up programs that they feel fit their communities. So now let's talk about the tools that the city has in place and some proactive steps we might want to take. So if scooters drop tomorrow, they would follow our existing business registration process. We interpret that to mean that for any grouping of devices they leave, they would need to register the location with the city and pay the $75 fee. That's our current process. So with that information, I'd like to present you with a staff recommendation for your council discussion. So earlier I mentioned our city currently only addresses business registration. We would recommend a two-phase approach that would address the immediate impacts that might be experienced if devices were to be dropped in the city tomorrow. This would, or, soon as we can get this done. This would address what many communities see as an issue, which is how they are staged, the aesthetics of the community, ADA clearance, and unimpeded access to businesses. This also would put in place limits for how many could be staged in one location. We would also look at the Scottsdale model as it relates to bike racks and no parking near public art. Phase one would address staging and spacing. No more than four devices maximum, not per vendor, could be staged at one location, No more than four devices maximum, not per vendor, could be staged at one location if it is in a public right-of-way. And additional devices would need to be staged or parked no closer than 200 feet from another grouping. This would ensure a clean look and reduce clutter and constraints for members of the public or business patrons. As a future next step, when a vendor does decide to enter the city, we would look at other factors such as how frequently they are moved when not in use, how complaints are handled, as well as location limits, impound procedures, and surcharges. We could also evaluate indemnification and annual blanket licensing fees as part of the future phase and process. This is an evolving environment for devices. Many cities currently have devices in their communities, and they're coming up with innovative solutions to address the impacts. So since we do not currently have devices in our community, phase one would address some of the immediate needs while affording us time to adopt those best practices. Having heard this presentation, to summarize, staff is recommending we initiate the phase-one approach, which includes our existing business license process, registration process, a four-device maximum per right-of-way location, and 200-foot spacing requirement. Phase two would come at a later date if and when a device company arrives or shows interest in the city. And with that, Mayor, would you like to lead the council in discussion? And while you're doing so, I would be happy to take notes and answer any questions so that you guys come to consensus.
Thank you. It was a clear presentation. So who would like to start? Bill?
Thanks, Christian. You know, I brought this up maybe almost a year ago now. After seeing the result of what was happening in Peoria, a number of scooters were just being dumped all over the place. It was really, you could tell the moment that they came in and you could tell the moment that they left. I mean, it was very, very dramatic. And since we did not have a scooter company, I think it's important that we get ahead of it before they even show up, as opposed to reacting to it once they arrive. So I'm concerned about the two-phase approach. I don't know why we're just not going, let's get it all in place before anybody shows up and then deal with the consequences of what we need to, as opposed to let's hold back and then adjust on the fly as we need to later. I'd rather let them know what kind of environment they're getting into, as opposed to let them get into the community, the community gets used, whoever, whoever that community is, gets used to having the device, and then we realize we've got a runaway train and we don't know how to stop it. And then we start going through this regulatory process and all the rest of it. If we don't have the problem yet, my thought is let's get it all done upfront. The licensing fee, and I don't want to take your video away, but if we can go back to the one slide.
Jeff, Mary.
Been there, right there.
Yeah, my friends live there.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right by one of my favorite restaurants in Tempe. Anyway, the annual license fee, 75 per location. Nobody else is charging per location, at least in the cities that you've identified. So I'm not understanding what we mean by per location, and I think from a business perspective, it might be easier to just have a flat annual fee.
It most likely definitely would. So cities like Scottsdale don't have a fee at all. Cities like Tempe have about $8,000. And so I believe Phoenix has 300, they're allowing 300 in downtown per vendor. So if you do the rough math on that, if it were four max, 300 scooters, we'd roughly end up, I think, I wrote the number down, but off the top of my head, we're around somewhere around $5,000 if they were to, let's say, put 300 in our city. So it puts us comparable, but yes, definitely from a negotiating standpoint, it'd be a lot easier to do an annual fee probably from their perspective.
And I would find it hard to believe that we're going to have the kind of quantity and need that Phoenix would have or even Tempe, given their student population, that perhaps the Gilbert route of a flat fee might make a little bit more sense. I'm trying to, we're trying to impose these regulations on a business that we're not, we're not quite sure what their impact is going to be. But if we're going to do this regulatory process, I think it's necessary. This is one of those times when government regulation is necessary for the public safety and the appearance of our community. But I don't think it needs to be so restrictive that we're going to have, so I'm not suggesting eight grand. Tempe is onto something with that, but they've also got a huge market there. So I'd like to see that more of the Gilbert model, four per vendor, the 2,500, 200 or 150 feet spacing, I think is, that's probably a roll of the dice, it doesn't matter. Moved within 24 hours. I think we should consider an impound fee upfront, because we're going to end up picking these up. There was a time when code enforcement used to go around and pick up garage sale signs. When I first got into the community, that was a huge no-no. And you taped a garage sale sign to the traffic pole, it was pulled off. Well, it was someone's handwritten sign. It wasn't a big deal. But if you looked at the code enforcement pickup truck at the time, it was filled with signs of these literally bandit signs. I can only imagine that the code enforcement van now is going to be filled with scooters if that's our issue, and we need to have some recovery component with that. So that's my 10 cents worth.
Wally?
Well, I'm sorry to say, I've not seen any in Goodyear. I've seen some kids with them, and the parents took it away when they saw how dangerous it was with them riding to school and not stopping to cross the street and just zipping through because they didn't know how to stop it. So I'm at a disadvantage here, although I have been in communities where you see bikes laying around everywhere. Since we do not have a downtown, I don't know how long it'll be till someone tries to come to bring those. I mean, where would they ride them in Goodyear, literally? And as you know, we have a tremendous amount of bike clubs in Goodyear that are extremely active. And if those bike riders are going to share now the bike lanes because of the state law with these scooter things, I think we're going to have a real issue, and I'm really concerned about the public safety. I would not, I would want a huge fee if they want to come to Goodyear. I think we should do a large fee and do a fee for the recovery if we have to do it, and then hopefully, gee whiz, I mean, if we get a campus here, a college campus, I could see them riding it, but where would they go? I mean, the way our city is laid out, I would hate to see someone coming down from Estrella on a bike lane, coming down that hill. I mean, we'll be picking them up, pieces of them.
Be challenging to do.
It is, yeah. I mean, this is scary because of our layout. I mean, I don't want us not to be able to do it, but gosh, I'm really torn. It's like doing it so early, we don't really even know what the impact's going to be or who's going to come or where it's going to go, and it makes the decision a little bit more difficult.
Thank you. This is an interesting thing, because having worked in downtown Phoenix, that was kind of a part of the landscape there. The bikes, the scooters and things. I agree with Wally. I struggled with where are people going to ride them here, and if there was a market, I think they would be here. And so it's a challenge, but perhaps when we get our rec campus and we get our Civic Square and some other amenities, we may generate more traffic. So I think it is wise to anticipate that somebody could possibly come. And I agree with Bill. I think we should do it all at once, a one-phase approach and include the impound fee. I don't think we want to do a huge fee personally, just to, I don't, I think that there is a market for these. There are people that want to use these, and I wouldn't want to discourage that. When I was looking through the, I think it was our, it was one of the attachments about motorized skateboards, and it said something about requiring helmets and things. Are there requirements, safety requirements? Or people just ride them at their own risk? I mean, when they're, when they sign up through the app, they're acknowledging that if they're riding without helmets or whatever, they're...
I believe the state law states under 18 or under 16.
Must have a helmet?
I believe so. I don't remember off the top of my head, but there's no requirement for helmet.
And then how is that even enforced? You know, it's kind of, I guess that's more parental, but that's, yeah, I mean, it's a danger. I like Scottsdale's approach, just sort of being moderate, just because I think there is an interest in this. But again, I thought we had some at one point, because I remember seeing some, and then they disappeared. So, which tells me that we don't have a market for it at the moment, but that could change.
I've seen three. I don't know if somebody rode them here or how they got here, but they got taken away. So not sure. I think somebody may have driven or made one here, so.
All right. Thank you.
Sherry?
Thank you. That was a really good presentation. Now, is this, are we going to talk about the bikes too with the same type of format as well? Because I think we might have more of a market for bikes. I agree with Laura that when we get the rec campus built and when we get the city center built, that's when I think we're going to start seeing this type of transportation or the next generation of this type of transportation come forward. I don't think we're going to see, I don't know if they've got enough juice to get down from Estrella. You could probably get down, you probably couldn't get up to Estrella, up the hill with these. But I do have a concern. I do like what Bill said about kind of following more of the Gilbert model and kind of doing the impound fee and setting that also. Everyone who comes in is on the same playing field, and they all know where they're at, and if we're going to do the bikes too. Because I have seen those in downtown Phoenix where, you know, sometimes we kind of made jokes when we're down there. It's like, oh, look, someone's actually riding a bike today. It's 110, you know? Because they don't, the scooters, I think, will probably be more popular than the bikes, just because for the younger people, I think that's what, they're going to be more popular. But I would also like to know about when it says the indemnification. That is a concern, because they had these in Glendale around our office for a while, and some of these people, they drove crazy, and I can just see, I mean, people will sue us if their bike hits, what was it? Hits the cow grate. I can't imagine the lawsuits. How do we protect the city? You know, when these people are riding these scooters, maybe not the best, maybe without their helmet, that they should be, because they're an adult, we can't tell them, and they hit, you know, a patch in the road.
How about a city sign they hit, like the cow did?
How do we protect ourselves? Is there an indemnification that if they rent them in Goodyear, that part of their, our agreement with them is that they're signing, when they sign up, an indemnification? How does that work and how can we protect the city?
A lot of the cities, when they set up their, I don't want to say pilot, when they set up their programs, if you will, and the vendors come to the table, it looks like they've negotiated some language within that agreement or contract.
That's what I would like to see for us, just because I know where the deep pockets, if something happens. And I think we do have the time, because they're not knocking on our door right now, because we don't have that density yet. But as you see apartments going up and you see more shopping, you're going to see that density, they're going to come. So I think, I think you did great research here, and if we can maybe add some of those parts and get something ready to go so when they do knock on our door, when we do have that density, we know where we're at. So thank you.
Bill?
You know, driving a motorcycle through the city on some of the major streets, there's a lot of crazy people out there. And I can't imagine taking one of these things either on Estrella Parkway or on McDowell or Litchfield Road. I'm just telling you, you take your life sometimes in your own hand, and I've got a motor where I can get out of the way, and that three or five, 15 miles an hour ain't going to cut it. But if they so choose, I think we want to get ahead of it. So I agree with Bill and Sherry for indemnification, and I also agree that she should have everything in place. I'd like to see if they have about two grand. So if it's going to be that worthwhile to them, I'd like to see an annual fee of two. I'd like to see the distance, 200 feet is fine. I'd like to see every piece of the property identified, so I like to pick up what the time to pick up has to be so that if the code enforcement has to pick them up, they know who's got it and who to contact. And there should be a pickup fee if we've got to get them. So I'm going to piggyback on what Councilmember or Vice Mayor Stitt was talking about with Sherry and indemnity. But I tell you, I would think, I'd be a little worried in our traffic situation, putting these things to our city only because of the traffic. And really, I have a couple of main drives to get through there, and I think from a safety standpoint, I wouldn't want my kids running through one of those things to the city. So there's my two cents worth.
Yeah, I have several concerns. I just, let's go back to the legal side of things, okay? Getting on a council, we learned a number of ways people sue the city. Okay, so you're walking in a park and you get sprayed on, and you're on this chance you slip. You know the city's going to pay for that. The cow, the cow.
The cow, I remember the cow.
The cows, yes. And remember the sign we had up there?
Yes.
And the biker hit the sign, we got sued. Who won on that? We all know who won on that, but going into details.
Yeah.
So we have a number of things in the city that, don't kid yourself, we'll get a lawsuit for some of these. So I think we have to be sure of our position when we do that. So that concerns me. Also, it concerns me in our new park. So we have walk paths now that are going to be going all around that. So now are we going to have the scooters with the different age groups walking around that worries me. Then what worries me too is that, how many wide sidewalks do we have in Goodyear?
Not very many.
I think we even talking about with the city manager, trying to get a restaurant that would put a big enough patio out and cement so we can have, you know, be able to eat or dine outside. So we are structurally not really set up for this. And I can just see the complaints of the grouping of the scooters or the bikes in close to somebody's neighborhood, where they have, this is a neighborhood of kids, children on bikes. I can see that complaint come. The other thing, I ran the safety of being up at Estrella. I think bikes could be up there, but a scooter, you know the kids are going to come driving that. Everybody's going to try to come down that hill.
Of course.
Yeah. I'm good at that age. Yeah.
Yeah, at West Star, yeah.
So there are so many, this is not the easiest place to have that kind of activity. Yet it's nice to be able to have bikes in the area where people can bike your city. And, but I didn't see a lot of stands, you know, when they bring it, so you can put it wherever, you can lay it down. But yet, I know it's advancement, and I know it's new technology, and I know people want some of it. So it's really hard for me to see how we're going to blend. Are we going to change our rules and construction and say they need wider sidewalks now? And they need not just a green space, but they need a space set aside for athletic equipment, bikes and so forth? So it has a lot of concern for me on that. Let me see what else I had written down here. I guess the prosecution was the big thing I thought about, because we've gone through so many things like that. And I think definitely it has to be two set of rules, south and the north side. You're going to allow them to come down that hill? And I think, and we have a lot of biking teens now, especially up at your area, because on Saturday or Sundays sometime, yeah, and they're riding on the street, so. Yes, I'm done. Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. Do we have to do something, I mean, by law? Because the state says they can go in these bike lanes. We have to do this?
We don't have to do anything. The, if we wanted to be proactive, in the event they did come to the city, we wanted to make sure that, based on the recommendation from council, that we're prepared and we have something in place. So this is being more proactive. So we don't know that they're going to, I've not heard that they're going to drop or come to the city. They could tomorrow. That would be interesting.
I get that, but what I'm asking, do we have to do something? I mean, do we have to allow it? Because the state tells us we can't say this type of transportation is not allowed in Goodyear? We can't go against state law, right?
The state redefined it to where they're treated the same as bicycles and...
So, okay, so we, okay.
But they don't address the staging component, which is where I think we have the greatest leverage.
And I agree with being, planning ahead of time and being ready for this, because technology, I don't know how we're going to stop it totally. So I'm, I just want, things I said, I don't want to say no and access, and we're not going to do it, but we better be very clever and we better be with our developers and the neighborhoods that are developed. And we better have that part of the development, make them aware. And we don't want to have the cost of widening that sidewalk and widening those corners and doing all the things to prepare for this. So I agree, neither on topic. So Sherry, I'll just go back around this.
Well, and I think also when we look at some of the items here for the staging, we might want to be a little bit different with the bikes, because I think the bikes, we do have the bike lanes. They would be, they're not, or non-electric powered bikes. I know there are some that are electric powered, but the pedal bikes, I think maybe we put those in a different category a little bit. Allow more, because that would be something that I think would be easier. I do have concerns with the scooters, everything the mayor brought up and everyone else, but I do like being proactive. I also would think we would want to talk to our developers with this, because, you know, and then how do we want to do an ordinance? Do we not want to allow these in our parks? You know, obviously up in Estrella, there's a lot of private property up there. But then you also get, when you're talking about the scooters, are we also going to do those hoverboards that people have, you know? I mean, it's kind of that you can just buy off of Amazon, your own. I mean, how do we, how do we regulate one and not the other? Is it just the commercial grade, I guess? So, but we might want to have the conversation with some of our larger developers. I don't think Pebble Creek will be a problem, because that's close.
Sidewalks, dear. We're in the street.
Well, yeah, but you can't get in there if you don't, I mean, so they're not going to be able to get in there to do that. But I guess if someone from Pebble Creek wanted to drive one in, I mean, they could. So I think we should have that conversation with our developers too, just to see if there's something we're missing that they're going to think about and then educate. Because I can see as we get restaurants and bars, I'm not, and I've actually had a DUI on a scooter years and years ago. Not me personally, but you know, we prosecuted one. We prosecuted one. I can see as we get bars and restaurants, because that's where these are going to say, I'm not going to drive my car. I have a really good idea. I'm going to take my scooter home from the bar that's by the new city hall, and then they get an accident through the city. So I think we just need to keep looking through that. I think it's a great, and I want to be proactive, so thank you.
I think one way we can definitely work that in, if what I'm hearing you guys say is accurate, is in that license, annual license fee, if there's a negotiation on that, adding some of these concerns in there. So having an education campaign, perhaps if it's Hillley or an area like that, these scooters can use GPS to artificially slow them down. So perhaps we could add some of that type of language in there when we have those annual fees.
What about our grocery stores and parking lots? Are we going to negotiate parking lots so that there is an area within those parking lots where they can park? The bikes and the other. So again, that brings the development community into working that through the SureDog ownership. All right, I'll start and go around this way.
Okay.
Well, people have bicycles now, and probably people in Goodyear have their own electric scooters and hoverboards. So I think, I don't know if we've heard about any kind of problems in parks or in public right-aways at this point. I was curious about, I think Phoenix is doing geo-fencing on, was it the bicycles? Something, some, one of the devices. And so if we're concerned about people riding down the hill, maybe we could geo-fence them out of it. But, you know, I was thinking, you know, when we have visitors, we're getting new hotels, when we have spring training visitors, people might want to take a device to the park, and you know, who knows? I mean, we can't really see now what people might use it for. I mean, we can't really see now what people might use it for, but it doesn't mean that there won't be a need for this in the future. So I think we can integrate it into our life. I mean, in some ways, they're taking their lives in their own hand when they're getting down on those busy streets and things, but I think we can make a way for this to happen.
Next, Bill?
My son uses a scooter to go from his apartment to Mill Avenue on, ironically, at 22-years-old, and they're all over Tempe. They're a pretty popular form of transportation down there. We can choose to do nothing and wait until the scooters come and then do something, but then we will be way behind in what we want to try to achieve. I don't know that we can regulate everything. It's not really a development issue. We can't, I don't think we're talking about making streets wider or sidewalks wider. I mean, the operator has to have some responsibility in their own piece. I'm assuming any ordinance that we craft is going to go through legal, so Rourke and his staff are going to look at liability issues for the city, et cetera. So I think we're really talking fundamentally about the policy issue of do we want to regulate where these things go and how they come into the city. The geofencing idea is, I think, really appropriate, that if they can, if we can get them to cut off between Cotton Lane and Estrella Parkway, that they're not even, I'd say that they're not even used between that Cotton Lane and Estrella and the bridge, or, drawing a blank on the name of the street, but, you know, down there.
Vineyard.
Vineyard, thanks. That eliminates the thrill seeker who's going to go down there. But I think, I think we have a huge potential. As somebody pointed out, the rec center, I didn't even think of spring training, but if you take the hotels that are going up at Bullard and I-10, and I want to go from there to the ballpark, I don't want to pay for parking, I don't want to, I'm going to, I can scooter over there, drop the scooter, and then I can either Uber back or figure out what I'm going to do, and I don't have to worry about parking, and I don't have to worry about messing around with the traffic or anything. I think if we overthink it, we're going to probably do just as much damage. So I'd really like to encourage everybody that we, that we look at this from a, how are they going to be parked? How are they going to be placed? And how are we going to just regulate it? And then we can, because that's the thing that we know is problematic, and then we can address the other problems that these things are going to develop. Who knows, in five years, these things might have, well, A, maybe gone, B, maybe replaced with something even cooler, or they may be faster. And now we have to talk about speed regulation. I mean, we don't even know. So I just, from a community aesthetic perspective, let's not, let's make sure that they're not laying around all over, and that people are tripping over them, and the people who are actually using their bikes or are using human-powered scooters. We've got somebody on staff whose kids scooter from their house to the middle school. I mean, and it's a long, but they're human-powered scooters. Who knows what, who knows what'll come up in the next five years, so.
Joe?
No, I tend to agree, we want to get ahead of it. I still think they're going to be probably ways out, because if I was staying at the hotels and I wanted to get to the ballpark, you take your life in your own hand trying to take that to the ballpark. But if you want to do that, you should be able to do that. I just want to make sure they're not laying around, I agree with Vice Mayor, and I also think we should have those regulations in place on there. You know, I don't think there's a whole lot of use we'll have, but I'd still rather us get ahead of it than to find and not do anything, because if we don't do anything, they're going to show up and drop them all over the city. Because I'm, the way the law is written, my understanding at the state, it's going to happen, all right? So we might as well get ahead of it and set that up, and make sure that if they lay them down, we charge them a fee for pickup, that at certain times that they got to get them off the streets, and also make sure they're properly identified so that we know who they are, and when we pick them up, who to call, to tell them to come and get them. So I think all those pieces have, excuse me, have to be in place, so. But I think we need to get ahead of this, and I agree with the Vice Mayor on that.
Wally?
Okay, speaking of getting ahead, because we're going to get ahead, we're going to have to address this at all of our parks, and we're going to have to address this at the ballpark, because if someone rides a scooter, they cannot take that scooter to their seat because there's no room to put it. So there's going to have to be bike racks or something designated at the ballpark where it doesn't impede traffic, where they have to leave their scooters, and how do they lock it up? And if it's not one of the rental scooters, what if it's their personal scooter? What do they do with it? So there's a, I mean, you know, this isn't a cut, dried case that we can just say, okay, let's charge this, and let's do this, and let's do that. Got to think of an awful lot of stuff, because truthfully, I don't want to see those ever on any of our walking trails in the parks, because you've got people of all ages and all disabilities using those walking trails. And not everyone is courteous when they're going faster than other folks, and I would not want to see them endanger someone because they were ripping through the parks.
Any other comment? We don't want to put a black cloud over this, all right? But it's best we, each one, every one of us to say something they worry about and still go forth, because we know you can't stop it. But if we're going to do it, let's do it so it's advantageous for our city, as well as the commuter, as well as the tourism and all the others, so. Because we still owe the responsibility to make sure we're doing right for our homeownership and renters who are living in Goodyear. So we want to do it that fits all of them, so. Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
And this was spectacular.
Great. Well, Tammy, help me make my presentation a little bit more interesting, and I want to thank Rourke for, and Rob for looking at the legislation and also finance for the information administration.
Thank you. Thank you to all you for the help, and it was quite an entrance. All right, councilmembers, do you have anything you need to report? All right, manager, do you have anything you need to report? Okay, then our next meeting is a regular meeting on September 23rd, 2019, at 6:00 PM. No further business, this meeting's adjourned.